Good evening, everybody. Welcome to your city council meeting. Thanks for coming. I'm gonna call us to order. The first thing, please, is silence your cell phones. Secondly, I go back and forth on this, but at present, we do a land acknowledgement, acknowledging that the place we're doing business has been occupied much longer than by white people. And what to do about that, I don't exactly know. But if we quit talking about it, we're gonna quit talking about it. So we're still talking about it. Let's say the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we're going to recess to consider the urban renewal agenda.
Hey, and opening the urban real meeting for June tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, do I have the right one open? No. Uh, any, uh, will any, any additions or changes to the agenda?
Uh, there's not, and I don't see anyone signed up to speak from the audience either.
Okay, um, first thing on the agenda is the, uh, consent agenda. And there's nothing, so never mind. Well, consider that a raging success. Um, the next thing is a hearing for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget adoption. Um, and I have a script here. Are we ready to just augur into that? Okay, this is the time scheduled for a public hearing regarding the approved budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five for the Hood River Urban Renewal Agency. We will now take public testimony. Uh, Haley, has anyone signed up? Has anyone in the audience that may not have signed up wish to talk about, uh, urban renewal budget? Okay, if no testimony, go to dot, dot. Uh, the public hearing on the fiscal, no, that's not true. Okay, the public hearing is now closed. So that was easy. Um, so it, Will.
Not too much to say. The, um, budget was, uh, the proposed budget was reviewed by the Budget Committee on May fifteenth and adopted as proposed. Um, so now as to you, um, as the approved, uh, approved budget for adoption. Some of the major initiatives for fiscal year twenty-five are continuing, uh, with stormwater improvements, both in the waterfront and in, uh, downtown. Uh, once we have a price for the stormwater projects, um, uh, doing a closeout resolution for the Columbia Cascade. Uh, prioritizing the last remaining, uh, improvements to the district. Uh, and then, um, continuing to move forward in the heights with the Heights Streetscape project. So we budgeted to do the first several, um, projects in that plan. And then we have our inaugural, uh, year of operation for the brand new West Side District. Um, and, uh, what we're planning for that district is still to be determined based on a in-process five-year action plan.
Excellent. And, and I wasn't at the budget meetings, but they were, they were good and interactive and.
Well-fed.
And snacks were had.
Okay, that, that's good.
That Mark bought from sustain.
That's good. Um, excellent. Anyone on the agency wish to comment before we just get a motion? Gladys, are you there? Would you wanna sing a song with your sore throat?
Song? I am here and no songs to sing for me.
All right, Megan?
I move to adopt resolution twenty-two-four dash U R A dash zero five, adopting the budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Second. All right, Megan has a first and Doug has a second. Uh, any other comments or questions? Uh, seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? Oh. I'm sorry, was that Ben on the line?
Uh, I don't believe Ben's on the line.
Okay. Gladys, was that a yes or a no?
Yes, yes. Can you guys hear me?
Okay.
Yes, we hear you just now.
Yep, thank you. Um, okay, so the, uh, chair votes yes, uh, motion passes, the budget is approved. Uh, is that it for the hearing thing? I think so. Okay, uh, next thing is we have a couple, um, regular business items. Uh, Will, you wanna take it away?
I'm going to, uh, put a PowerPoint slide up. Great. Uh, so tonight we have a discussion item on, um, construction incentive concepts targeted towards, um, producing more of missing middle housing types, uh, here in Hood River. Uh, so today is just a, just a discussion, no specific action. Um, so what I'm, uh, what I'm hoping to talk to you about is one, just an overview of the Hood River, uh, housing context. And then where this construction incentive proposal fits into whole menu of strategies that, uh, the city and the urban renewal agency, uh, have been moving forward for years to help improve affordability. Um, in Hood River, and then go over a concept for a specific construction incentive to get your input and feedback on. So overall, in Hood River, um, building has been slowing for the past several years. Uh, this graph shows building permits for new homes in the bounds of our current West Side District. And in the last ten years, there's been, uh, twenty-four homes permitted, and in the last five years, uh, only five. Um, and this is for our largest reserve of remaining undeveloped, uh, land within our city limits and urban growth boundary. Uh, and home, uh, home prices, while they have stabilized somewhat in the past, um, handful of years, they've stabilized at levels that are unattainable for average hires. For, um, you know, we've been dealing with, uh, housing affordability issues in Hood River for decades at this point. Um, but at least through about twenty-twenty total pandemic, we were tracking with, uh, Portland's, uh, median home price. But during the pandemic, we, uh, shot up higher, decoupled with the port, with Portland and have stayed elevated, um, as compared to the median, uh, home price in Portland. Thank you very much.
Um, and despite these home prices, the population of Hood River does continue to grow unabated. So if you have elevated home prices, uh, net inflows of population, um, uh, we're gonna, over time, get displacement, uh, of, uh, middle and lower income workforce, uh, folks. And, um, people who are earlier in their years and have less, um, earnings potential, and that's what we're seeing in the data. Um, this shows the, uh, proportion of school-aged, uh, schoolage population as a percentage of Hood River County. And we've always been above, uh, the Oregon average. Um, we've, uh, kind of been known as kind of a trending younger county for decades. And that's been, uh, part of the economic vitality of, uh, this area, but it's been reducing in, uh, recent years. We were, uh, uh, have reduced from three percent above the Oregon average, now only one percent above the Oregon average. And the, uh, leading indicator is, uh, looking even worse, where we typically had birth rates that exceeded, uh, the United States average, uh, consistently through about the early two thousands. Um, but have been consistently below it since about two thousand thirteen here in the county. So that's maybe not proof positive, but a symptom that you would expect to see if, um, people were being, uh, uh, pushed out of the, out of the county. Uh, so in an environment of unaffordability, where maybe we can't change interest rates or the overall, uh, trend of the market. Uh, there is the possibility to at least influence the type of housing product that's made. And, uh, seeing that smaller homes are generally, uh, relatively more affordable than larger homes. Um, and this is one place where the Urban Renewal Agency, um, can have influence. Um, and in fact, I'll go into, it's actually one place where we have maybe unintended, uh, unintended consequence of some of our policies have actually incentivized larger homes. So, uh, this is, this was, uh, providing, uh, an incentive, uh, to help build missing middle and, uh, more affordable housing was envisioned. In the, uh, two thousand twenty-two Affordable Housing Strategy that the Urban Renewal Agency, uh, the Wood and West Side District was created to partially implement and fund. Um, it was, I have, uh, they're kind of the matrix of subsidies to be provided by the Urban Renewal Agency from, uh, one of the pages in the Affordable Housing Strategy. And then our often, uh, used timeline of all the different, uh, affordable housing initiatives that we've implemented and where now we're on to direct and off-site subsidies. So. Uh, moving on to what, what we can do with a construction incentive. I put these bounds around the concept that you're about to see. One, we have limited upfront money with this brand new West Side Urban Renewal District. And the nature of urban renewal is it's built on tax growth and tax increment in the future. So we have future money, not today money. So it needs to be bounded by, um, uh, the incentive can't be more than we, um, have funds to actually provide. There's, um, minimal administrative bandwidth for a complex program. And in speaking with, uh, and interviewing developers and builders, uh, to create this program, I've also found that there's, um, limited, um, patience for complex programs as well. Uh, generally, folks specifically, they're working in multiple different housing markets. Um, they're doing quick initial feasibility studies and then moving on if something doesn't, uh, immediately look attractive to them. Uh, this would, if we move forward with a construction incentive, it would be, uh, the first time we have ever directly, um, subsidized or assisted private markets. And so, um, I've understood, um, so the, uh, fairness and transparency, transparency will be critical. Uh, so not one-off agreement, agreements, but like, um, a standard, uh, formula that's, uh, well-telegraphed and well-understood. And then, but within these bounds, understanding that we, uh, don't have, if, if we're doing a light touch, um, and it's, uh, private sector focused. Uh, what we're gonna do is just bend the cost curve somewhat, and so we have to be, um. Uh, result, uh, we have to understand that what we're gonna be, the housing product that's probably coming, uh, from this, uh, incentive would be more affordable, but not capital A affordable. Uh, like we do when we land bake and we build, um, seven eighty grand road. So setting expectations. So then those bounds, uh, looked at, uh, Madras as a, uh, possible, um, model to, uh, emulate. So they provide, uh, for any single, for any residential development in any, in their housing urban renewal district. They will provide a rebate of fifty percent of the value that a property will generate in tax increment over the next seven years. Or they will provide a one hundred percent tax rebate for all the property tax increment that a residential property develop, um, new development will generate over the next seven years. So what this does really well is it aligns the cash flows of urban renewal and tax increment, uh, with the incentive that's being provided to the developer. What it doesn't do is tailor at all, um, uh, modest housing types or middle, uh, classically middle, missing middle type housing types. It's anyone who develops anything at all, uh, gets this rebate, uh, in Madras. So I wanted to look into how could we tailor this, uh, more, uh, to more be, to be more targeted here in Hood River? And so.
Before you, before you go on, could you verify that A and B are, there's an or in there?
Yes, it's a option.
Okay, thanks.
So, uh, one possible way to get at this is to tailor it, uh, based on relative development fee burden. So a large single-family home, uh, in, uh, Hood River will pay about thirty-eight thousand dollars in development fees. And that's system development fees for things like water, sewer, storm, but also construction excise tax, some of which is dedicated to affordable housing initiatives, and then permitting fees on top of that. Um, why I took this as a reference point is because many, uh, systems development charges and fees are flat based on number of units. Um, and so when you build a bigger home, it's proportionally, uh, cheaper. And that could be a good reference point. Uh, then I compared that to what, uh, cot, recent cottage cluster, uh, built under the city's Missing Middle Housing Code would pay in development fees versus what, um, a recent, uh, multifamily would pay in development fees. And of course, they pay more because they're larger developments, but not only do they pay more in absolute terms, they pay more in relative terms. So this is the development fee burden on these various production type, home production types as a percentage of their estimated construction value. And so the cottage cluster will pay almost twice what a large single family home will pay. And then multifamily being in the middle. And so if we wanted to use urban renewal funds to equalize the development fee burden, it's not essentially, not subsidize, but just remove disadvantage. It'd be about a $64,000 incentive to developers building cottage cluster. Or about 114 for this example, I believe it's about 30 unit multifamily. But as I noted earlier, we have, we don't have today money, we have tomorrow money. So this money would come from the return of the tax increment that new developments would build. And it would take about 16 years to refund the rebate to the cottage cluster and about seven years to rebate the incentive to this example multifamily. And these are just examples, every single development will be its own unique development fee burden and tax increment that it's going to generate. And so we'll need to finance this in order to give the, to give the incentive at the point of building completion. So I recommend in the, it's in the staff report, recommend an initial allocation of about 1.5 million dollars. That's an amount that could potentially be self-financed through borrowing from the city and then repaying the city. And the reason why this will need to be financed and need to be provided at the point of building completion is most builders, particularly the builders that do a high number of subdivisions and, and buildings here, the ones who really move the needle as far as quantity and volume. They borrow, build, sell, repay their loans, borrow again, build, sell. They don't hold and rent. And so if we're going to influence that building, part of our building community, the incentive has to be provided when they get their certificate of occupancy. And the reason why I recommend add certificate of occupancy and not earlier is because then we would need some sort of security or lien on the property to ensure that they complete it. And then that could actually jeopardize their other sources of construction financing. So once they have certificate of occupancy, we know it's going to go on the tax rolls. We know it's going to generate tax increment that will pay back the incentive. So that's the timing. But again, just kind of focusing too on if, if the incentive like this moves forward, being realistic in what it's going to produce. So we have the spectrum of all the things that we've done, you know, to address housing affordability on one extreme is when we buy land and we give it for free to a developer who then pairs it with federal tax credits and state funds and builds a four, regulated affordable housing. Housing that's must be income barrel file that the renters make 60% of less of their median income. On the total other side of the spectrum is just what the market is providing right now. And new homes coming on the market are roughly affordable to people making about 200% of their median income. So if we do a kind of a light touch development incentive to just get people to build slightly smaller homes rather than what the market is incentivizing right now, which is large, you know, about million dollar homes. Probably the first product through the shoot will be still unattainable to 100% area median income. Now it's what we would need, and what we're need to buy into and assume if we engage startup program like this is that if we can stimulate supply and bring down the average house size over time, that will produce increasingly affordable, more affordable homes. But it may take time and it may not be the first product that's built. The cottage cluster on Hull Street, for example, is the very first product built under our missing little housing code. And that was going on the market for, they were asking over $700,000 per unit. So we have to, yeah, just temper unfortunately expectations. So that's a program proposal for your consideration deliberation. Again, it's to just equalize the development cost burden for middle housing, guaranteeing that at, that the urban renewal agency will refund anything paid above 7% of the construction value for qualifying missing middle housing types paid at certificate of occupancy. And with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Did you hit it on PowerPoint that, that the proposal is a pool of funds that would be first come, first served? And, and about one and a half million is that still your thinking?
Yeah, I'll hit on that. That's in the staff report. So I've been proposing 1.5 million because I think it's what could be internally financed. But also I think there's benefit to having it be a limited pool so that there's urgency for builders to take advantage of it. I've, another takeaway from interviewing developers and builders is a lot of people are waiting for construction costs and interest rates to go down. And I think if we want to have an immediate impact, we want to have this be a first come, first serve and limited pool. Additionally, if we pilot this and create a repayment history, we may be able to seek external sources of financing in the future, but so far, none of my conversations with banks and other external lenders have been too fruitful because this is a novel, novel idea.
So, so I think that as, as we get ready to discuss the, just, you know, getting all our questions out and, and comments out is good. I think the decision point is do we ask staff to continue building this out and pulling in other departments, all, all that other good stuff, kind of thing. So.
Thanks. Well, that was super clear as usual. I always appreciate that. So thinking about whole $750,000, et cetera, for missing middle, obviously the market's going to decide the rate. We can't say, oh, we gave you $65,000 in incentives and now it's going to be $685,000 versus 750 or something like that, right? So do we have data to support? Or any sort of idea besides the high level? Like if we did this incentive and there were more of those developments happening, that the, that the price could shift.
Right.
Because of more availability.
Yeah, that's been a difficult issue in Hood River for years and years and years and years is can our small market, if you add some additional supply, will it just be subsumed by the larger, you know, Portland demand that's sitting right at our border? Or can we influence it? I put some links in the staff report to a literature review from UCLA and then also a study that was done by Echo Northwest in Portland proper that showed that additional supply can bend the cost curve at the neighborhood level. But as in any social, social science kind of experiment, you never have the null hypothesis, you know, you can never run two experiments at the same time to isolate. Yes, we did this and it had X effect. But the laws of supply and demand, you know, have been long studied and that's kind of what we, what we have to go on.
So we'd be incentivizing it getting built at all, but not necessarily the going to the band of 180% AMI, for example.
Yeah, many, so one issue with, you know, saying you have to sell it at a certain price or you have to rent it at a certain income level is one, it takes administrative bandwidth, like someone on our staff would literally need to be watching and verifying. And, you know, committing to that over the long term, you know, maybe 10 years plus. But secondly, it's just, you know, that 60% in AMI and less, the highly regulated, that is so heavily subsidized. I believe our 780 rand road is getting well over $40 million in state and federal support. And so to continue, it would, that all goes away though, and after you hit 60% AMI. And so there's just no way to feasibly, there's no amount of, we, we just can't afford locally to replace the amount of subsidy that would be needed to force a developer to then take the income cut of a, of a very specific AMI level.
Sure. And have you had discussions with Dustin staff about roughly what that financial burden would equate to in terms of cost for the city over those years in which, you know, we're paying them back and so they've gotten more of a real number of how much we truly are subsidizing?
Well, I do recommend just limiting it to 1.5 million to start out with. It's, you know, as urban renewal is, right? It's, it's, if you build it, they will come. And, and what would happen but for the incentive? And since these, so if you follow the logic that these developments are not happening currently, if you're catalyzing them, your, the new money directly offsets the expense on a one for one basis. But it only holds so much as you believe that these product isn't, isn't going to be produced otherwise. But that we, our permit history shows that this product isn't being produced. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm wondering if there's any other complexities with middle housing beyond, you know, the fees that are charged that make it something that someone's not going to want to develop. I mean, I'm, I'm not, maybe this is a question for Dustin or, or, but you know, is, is there, if someone gets that incentive, do we think that that's really incentivizing them to do that because they could do a single family home for the same price? Right? So is there complexity beyond that to?
Um, yeah, so maybe I'll start and Dustin.
I'm not trying to get you to get out, you know, come be over there, but.
Yeah, I interviewed many developers and builders and there are certain, just kind of fixed costs of the expensive parts of the house are the kitchen and the bathrooms. And small home or big home, we're going to have a kitchen and a bathroom. And so adding that fourth and that fifth bedroom is relatively cheap square footage to be added. And so, yes, the, it's not just development fees. Middle income homes are disadvantaged in other ways and from their cost structure.
Yeah, I think there is part of the, the most expensive aspects of the home, the kitchen, bathroom, regardless of whether you have 4,000, those are fixed. I think some of the elasticity in the pricing on the upper end, if you can, you know, you're trying to fit a home and do a kind of a sweet spot where people buy it. Once you get to that million dollar mark, it becomes a little more easy, easy to adjust. I think some of the issues that, that we saw is, and that we're working on too, is some of the SDC pricing. That is a fee element. Will is working on some of the offsets to that. You're working on some of what, although not equity adjustment, some pricing and size adjustments in your current methodology. However, your SDCs are not the majority of the SDCs being collected. And those methodologies haven't been revised, maybe with the nuance that, so middle housing, 2,000 square foot house, park fee, same, whether it's 5,000 square feet or one. And that, and that's a big, that's a big chunk. I mean, that, that fee often eclipses your, your fee. And in the multifamily, that's one per unit on there. Those fees escalate quickly. So I think that's, that's a disadvantage. And so I think we're offsetting some of what we're, you know, this program is trying to offset some of the things that you're actually working on and up in your utility models. It's also going to offset maybe some of the, the disadvantage that this product has. Fees that occur outside of your sphere of influence right now. Also, you know, as Will's folks said, you know, the price of just building anything is high. You know, the cost of money right now is extremely high. It's extremely volatile. So depending on where your sources of money are from, it is just really limiting that private sector from getting money that is cheap or that is affordable. And that's making it difficult, again, really kind of outside of your sphere of influence, but it really translates when it comes to product coming out of the ground, not. So we did a significant amount of permitting for middle housing and apartment buildings too, that have gotten to the point where they're at permit. And the feasibility, it's not in the entitlement phase. It's to get these things and translate them from entitlements to construction projects. And that is, that is a cost of, that's kind of out there. So we're writing down some of that. We're not going to be able to write down the cost of, of construction, the availability of labor and its cost. Those are things I think are really harming our small scale products and our short turnaround products. We're not institutional developers. We're not doing 1,000 houses. We do 10, we do five. And those are, that's, that's a difficult proposition for those folks out there trying to make money out of that.
Thank you.
Okay, glad us figured out. We see your hand. We're going to do Megan and Paul and Dennis.
Um, I think you answered a number of mine, but, and I think I got myself in my own head on this other question. But so the 1.5 million we're spending of the tax increment money, that's an outside loan is being used to pay, you know, anything over the 7%. And then the TIF is paying back the loan.
Okay.
Correct, with interest.
Okay. I think, yeah. I think, yeah, you covered everything else. So thank you.
To Doug's question, the way I see it is if we change the profitability of different size homes, we might incent somebody to build a smaller one. So it's not that the cottage cluster is going to magically go from 750 to 680. Rather, there's going to be more cottage clusters at 750 and fewer slightly fancier things at 810. That's the way I see it.
Ah, Gladys.
Thank you. Will, in your slides, it showed that the Dal's had some housing like a little over $200,000. Can you help me understand what is the Dal's doing that we could potentially replicate so that we have similar houses at similar prices?
Oh, I think, you know, I don't know if I can answer that they have a specific policy. You know, I think if you keep going further east, you know, to Hermiston and to La Grande and to Baker City, you're going to see prices continuing to go down and down as well. We have an extremely attractive environment, quick access to the metro, quick access to international airport. And just generally as you get closer to urban amenities and have such a beautiful landscape here, you're going to have higher home prices. So I, I don't, I'm sorry, I can't point to a specific, I think, program or process that I think the Dal's has implemented that we haven't.
Thank you.
Uh, great. Following up on Doug's question, I understand 1.5 million with interest. Talk about that. How much in administrative fees or administrative costs would take to track each individual property over time every year and account for every single property that comes on and offline? And track every single incentive that we have pipeline.
You mean with this current proposal?
Yep.
Very little. This will be extremely easy to administer.
Yeah, thanks. And then do you know how interest would be calculated off of this theoretical 1.5 million?
Yeah. So if we were to do an interfund loan with the city, we need to talk to the finance director. But I would assume there would be, you know, we would look at what other departments or what other, you know, the sewer fund, the water fund, all those have borrowed from the city before and look at what those interest rates are. And then risk adjust that for this program. So I imagine we probably add a point or two in interest for the fact that this is not, this is a pilot. It doesn't have a verified repayment source. We're not getting much interest from external financiers.
And then of the development fees that are in our control that are flat, the loaded question, why are they flat? And what can be done about that?
Sure. Well, I'll have Chris jump out if I miss anything on this, but under state law, as well as codified, it's been connected through case law to the US Constitution as well. Is these fees have to have a rational nexus to the impact that has had on the service, on the systems development, on the systems that are being developed with the systems development charges. And so if you have a big house or a small house, those families are probably using parks roughly the same. Or at least you couldn't, you couldn't, it would be hard to find a methodology to argue that one family is using the parks more or less than another based on home size. And so because these charges must be directly be directly tied to the specific impact that that development is having. Um, that's why you see quite often, uh, flat fees that don't vary the size of the home.
Great. Um, is there any, are there any fees that are currently flat that we have leeway or viability that we can tweak or change or encourage our peers at other districts to address?
Uh, so as Dustin noted, the, the parks SDC is, uh, the largest.
One.
Um, and so that one would, um, be interesting to look at if there's any possible way to, uh, size that differently, but I don't have, uh, an idea, uh, to offer tonight. I know, um, Chris is working with FCS and they've done some pretty interesting stuff, um, presented at a previous, uh, council meeting about, um, uh, statistically showing that there's, uh, uh, at least maybe a few fewer people living in smaller homes as in large homes and then using that to, uh, extrapolate that they use less water, they lose less sewer and, uh, providing at least a minimal break on SDCs. That would be helpful and useful. And in fact, if that is, uh, approved in conjunction with this proposal, that will make the money in this proposal go further, it will stretch it. But certainly if you're wanting to have a direct policy impact to promote missing middle housing, it needs to be done on the, um, on the subsidy side as well as on the regulatory side, at least where it comes to development fees.
Related to development fees, if it's possible, theoretically, for council to impose additional development fees on as, uh, larger per unit homes and move those fees over to smaller homes as an example.
Uh, there's not per se, if that is the sole justification. Yeah.
That's curious. Thanks.
Hey, uh, I have two sentences, but first Fiona, this is going a little bit longer than maybe we might have thought, but, uh, there's just one other agenda item after this on the urban renewal and then we'll get back to you. Uh, and then the second aside is there was a public comment that was sent to us via email and I just want to make sure that it's part of the record for this exact stand, this discussion. Minor more, I think we've answered my questions about, uh, financing and stuff. Since two thousand fifteen, one of the legs of the stool is how do we help market? How do we bend the curve for market housing? And, and so to me, this is a, is it, it's a sort of a cool experiment that we can do that, that, uh, given the urban renewal tool and, and, define a, define a chunk like this and, and, and see what it got us. Does it get us a multifamily development that we didn't, weren't going to get otherwise, or we didn't have evidence that we were going to get otherwise? Those kinds of things that, you know, everything that Chris said, I think that those are, there's, there's no tool we want to just throw away. But, uh, this is, this is certainly a tool that, that we should add to our, I think we should, uh, should add to our thing. So are there any other comments slash questions? Megan?
Um, two comments, one to, to Paul's comment of, uh, you know, oh, this won't make anything more affordable. I, I do concede like obviously the first ten or something aren't, but I, I, I do want to say that I, I think there is a reality and it will take a long time because yes, if we're going from five houses in the last five years to, you know, if we're lucky, I don't know, fifteen in the next couple, um, like that's, it's gonna be hard to, to do that curve in a dramatic fashion quickly. But I, I think the idea that more smaller homes will eventually start to have an impact on, on prices is logical. Um, I also want to, I know this is called the, the middle housing thing, um, obviously that's a great housing type and I want to see more of it. I also do want to really flag that we definitely need way more multifamily. The bang for the buck for the multifamily is even better, not just in this program, but you know, big picture for getting a lot of units online quickly. Um, so I really want to advocate that, and I know it's in here, um, but I, we haven't talked about it much. So I just want to make sure that's really important as you're moving forward, that, that becomes a part of this program, um, because it's something we really need to see more of.
Um, does, does a thumbs up work or would you like a motion for continuing your work?
And thumbs up is fine if it's unanimous.
Every, everyone, are we happy here? Okay, Gladys, are you, are you okay with them continuing the development of this concept?
Yes, and, and how do we talk about building something that's even smaller and what are those options to, I don't know, maybe have a, like tiny homes, for example, what, what would that look like as we are learning of what we can do because seven hundred thousand dollars, that's, that's a lot of money. But thumbs up.
Does that fit into the continuing to look at this?
You know, I'd look at Dustin on that one. The, the missing middle housing code is something we can plug right into and that hits that administrative, you know, in the, the ADUs, um, we've also, uh, in two thousand nineteen did a, a big update of ADU policy, but, Dustin, I don't know if you want to talk tiny homes.
Yeah, so, um, within the missing middle housing that actually discusses homes below eight hundred square feet, there's a set aside between the larger version and we actually on the regulatory side incentivize that. Although, so it has a, has a platform in the regulations already to address homes that are basically the sized, sized up to what we allow for ADUs. So in the continuum of the housing stock, we, we have zero to eight hundred uh, in the ADU world and as well as standalone, separate fee simple saleable lots, we have that addressed as a unique housing type. Uh, it has some benefits. It's got increased number of units per acre. Uh, and then that is split again for units under the size of twelve hundred square feet. So we have that addressed. Think the FCS study actually starts at eight hundred or seven ninety. So it starts seeing a little bit of a roll off and prep maybe, uh, the methodology would support a reduced SDC at that low level. And that's where your one, I think they mentioned they needed to generate a one, one human equivalent in those, um. But certainly if we wanted to expand that even more, I mean, that's our, we have something by way of tiny house. It's not a roll off mobile unit that kind of gets into the building code, but we, we have something for it. We could absolutely expand it. We're about to enter into some code, advanced code discussions if you wanted to take that further. That's really a legislative process, but we, we have a regulation in place for it.
Yeah, and I guess I, I might add too, I, uh, in crafting this, I was specifically very conservative because this is new waters that we're entering, entering into to just even the playing field in development fee burden. Um, but if we do this and it's successful and we want to turn the dial up, that's certainly, uh, and maybe further incentivize even smaller. Um, that could be a logical incremental move. Uh, if we move forward with this, I want to know exactly what kind of outcomes we're looking to measure, how we're going to measure the timelines, all that sort of stuff. How many units we're hoping to get out of it, sizes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And not just we're creating units and it's not a generous windfall to developers that they just talk and go on their merry ways.
Then, uh, what, this is an urban renewal incentive program, so it stays at this agency level. At, at, at some point, does it become a council discussion or it just stays here as an incentive program?
Uh, fully encapsulated here unless the city wanted to take this up and make it a citywide program, but it would need to find an alternative funding source.
Yeah, okay. Uh, so I think, I think we had thumbs up. You're going to come back next week? No, uh, sometime.
Yes, uh, we'll come back with a fully fleshed out, um, program to, that will be in a condition that's adoptable, but we can continue to, to workshop with you as well.
Well, Chris, for you.
Just to, to your point very quickly, uh, this would come up at city council if it was to be a city funded loan.
Yes.
And so the actual loan approval would be a city council approval item. If it got funded by another source, that would maintain completely a new area. So.
Um, all right. I think that's, that's it for the concept plan, uh, MIG contact, contract.
Thank you. Yes, I'm, uh, requesting a third amendment to the MIG, uh, contract. This was the contract that did the Heights Streetscape, uh, plan for us. It was competitively bid in, um, twenty twenty, I believe, and, uh, constructed so that it would be, uh, amendments, uh, added as we move through phases of the Heights Streetscape Plan. Heights Streetscape Plan as a singular document was, uh, completed at the end of twenty twenty-three and adopted into the Heights Urban Renewal Plan. Uh, what I'm asking for is authorization to add uh, a last task, uh, appended on to the end of that contract to assist with ODOT, uh, negotiation, uh, work. We have, uh, expect to have a, uh, draft jurisdictional transfer agreement from ODOT any day now, but we also know that it will require us to put in the ADA curb ramps that they are required to put in, in that area uh, under their settlement agreement by fiscal year twenty twenty-eight. And there's just no possible way that we can enter into that agreement and still have the phasing of the heights, um, wait on a roundabout. And so, uh, what I need is additional support to look at phasing and, uh, and the first, um, first task, the first, um, thing to do is a traffic study that is expected to cost twelve thousand dollars um, to just see if, uh, there could be any alternative, uh, traffic flow, uh, arrangement that will work on an interim basis that could allow us to move forward, uh, with sidewalk and curb improvements ahead of the roundabout being installed on, uh, May and thirteenth. What we really want to avoid is putting, uh, curb ramps in and then them being ripped out, uh, a few years later. And so, um, that's what this will support. And I, uh, put in a number there of fifty thousand to, um, cover us under all circumstances, but it will be charged on time and materials basis. And the first task of the traffic analysis is something to be about twelve thousand.
Right now, any questions, comments? And there is a, a suggested motion on page twelve.
It's really minor. In the amendment, it talks about the year being twenty twenty-two, not twenty-four in the top.
I'll make sure, I'll make sure that's changed. Thank you.
And I'm going to move that, uh, I can't talk. I'm going to move that the Urban Renewal Agency authorized the agency administrator to execute the third amendment with MIG for ODOT negotiation support.
Second. All right, first from, uh, Megan, second from Grant. Uh, any, any other comments or questions as we deliberate? Paul?
I'm just molding, like, is this a good idea?
I love this, the jurisdictional transfer or this.
In, in what way?
Saying to do more traffic study to contemplate the temporary upgrade so we can meet the curb and gutter deadline so we can get the JT, so like, just not totally convinced we're heading towards the light on that.
So if it's, we'll give you three million dollars with the work if you do it in the next five years. That's the versus not. I think, but, but still to the plan, right?
Yes.
We get to the.
Yeah, so sorry, I was moving quickly, but maybe it's worth, um, a little bit more explanation that, uh, if we don't do the work, ODOT will buy FY twenty-eight. Uh, and, and then we will have to rip it out if we want to make the Heights Streetscape, um, a reality. And so that's the tough, um, corner that we've been painted into.
So that's worse.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're still good with our motion in seconds? All, all in favor say yes. Any no's?
Any no's? Yes.
It was my own no that I was threw, threw off before. Uh, chair votes, yes, uh, motion passes. Um, thanks, Will. Um, any, any other things for the good of the agency? Doug?
None.
Megan?
Nothing.
Paul?
Nope.
Uh, Gladys?
Nothing from me.
And I don't have anything else either. So back to you, Paul.
Thank you. I'll reconvene the city council at ten to seven. We have business from the audience. We have several folks sign up and I think we have some, okay, online, great. So we'll start with Marta and then Matthew. I don't know if you've used this microphone before, Marta, touch the white edge and it will turn green. Just like that.
All right. So I'm Martha Verusco Ortega, and I'll just read what I have just to make it quick and sweet. Um, each year for the last seven years, Hood River Latino Network has had a Latino festival in the month of August for the entire community with the focus on resources and twist of a fiesta. We also celebrate the work and powerful activism we have done throughout the year and continue to build strong community connections within the gorge and throughout the Pacific Northwest. This will be our fifth annual Latino festival. Uh, we recently opened our doors to our immigrant help center, which is a dynamic hub for immigrant and Latino community members to receive assistance with navigating systems, minor courses and training, civic engagement, including voter education and registration, local happening, support and much more. So we're here to ask for a waiver of the fee to the Latino Festival on August eighteenth for Jackson Park.
Great. Thank you, Martha. We'll get back to you about that.
Thank you.
Maddie?
I'm also going to read today. Hello, councilors, mayor and city staff. I'm sorry not to see Tim here. My condolences to his colleagues and to his, to his family. Thank you for your time and your service to our community. As you know, my name is Matthew Barman. I'm also known as Maddie Green. And I am the owner and operator of a transportation and delivery business based here in Hood River. I have been operating successfully in our community with both e-bikes and electric vehicles since two thousand eighteen. I'm here today to speak on the subject of city taxi regulations and enforcement. I'd like to alert you, we've already talked about this before. There is ample, ample evidence that non-permitted drivers are increasingly making pickups in our city. Our team has come across advertising for Uber rides in the form of business cards and Facebook postings. We have heard multiple accounts and passengers, of passengers getting Uber rides originating within our city limits. We can see Uber tagged vehicles moving around our community and on the Uber app. I personally witnessed Uber drivers picking up customers, Best Western and around town. We have some photographic evidence, includes license plates from California and Texas, operating as Uber drivers. The law is clear that this sort of commercial activity in our city is not allowed without a permit, which all the local taxi companies and drivers dutifully apply and pay for on an annual basis. The taxi permitting process is in place to protect our citizens and visitors from dangerous interpersonal or mechanical situations and price gouging. We are known community members who submit to a background check each year. We have our vehicles inspected on an annual basis. We are required to have quite expensive commercial automobile insurance and, and liability insurance and list the city on our policies. We charge customers up, only up to the limit that the city prescribes. I am following the rules and I'd expect anyone else who is offering commercial rides in our town should do the same. I brought this to the attention of Jen Gray, the city recorder and police chief Holstein. There has been muted responses from both of them and murmurings that the code is too old or outdated to enforce, referencing background communications with the city attorney. I'd like to know the rationale for this posture. Not too many years ago, my colleague that you know, Jason Peterson, was cited in a police sting operation for operating without a permit. Why is the city staff and police department not acting on multiple tips of law breaking within our city? Councilors, please assure me that you, your staff and our police officers will be enforcing the city's taxi ordinance as it stands. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, man. Yes, we have online. Um, I have the name. I don't have the address. Tracy, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Can you go ahead and tell, tell us your address and go ahead, please?
Sure. I'm Tracy Thomas-Paul. I live in Hood River. And, um, tonight I wanted to talk about the mayor's Equity Advisory Council. I see it's on the agenda for later this evening, uh, perhaps as the result of questions I posed about the group in April and May. Mayor Blackburn regularly mentions his mayor's Equity Advisory Council. It appears on the winter twenty twenty-four message on the city's website. And recently it appeared on the list of ten stakeholder groups that will provide the city with feedback on a new development code. In the last council meeting, Paul said that Kevin Liberty, a senior planner for the city, quote, "came to my Equity Advisory Council and very specifically requested participation for the Development Code Audit." Kevin's a city employee making a request for help with city. Kevin's a city employee making a request for help with city project work affecting city development for years to come. But what is the mayor's equity advisory council and who's on it? That's a reasonable question, particularly in Oregon, which values transparency in state and city meetings and actions. The mayor describes this group as a, quote, fairly formal loose-knit group, close quote. The members, Latinx, Black, Indigenous, provide perspectives from communities that haven't always had a voice with past local government. And that's admirable. But I don't understand a few things. Why aren't the members listed somewhere? And even more, why shouldn't this group become a formally established one in the city? The current advisory council members, or the ones whose names I was given, have undoubtedly helped the mayor with insights. A few of them may even think the group is formal. Two of the seven members list the council on their LinkedIn profiles. But we're missing something. All the group's members work for either government or nonprofit groups. Opening up membership to a larger community who could apply might bring in voices with a diversity of work experiences. Military service, business ownership and other elements within these underrepresented groups. Other cities around Oregon list a variety of citizen advisory groups similar to the mayor's equity advisory council on their websites. They show member names, they have applications and they describe goals. In Albany, one of the seven member seats is even for a high school student. Beaverton, Bend, Corvallis, Tuolleton, Lake Oswego, Salem, Kaiser, McMinnville, the list goes on, but doesn't include Hood River right now. I suggest that if Mayor Blackburn really wants those voices heard, bring some sunshine to the group. Bring it to the city council, um, a recommendation that the council create that group formally with terms. Applications for interested people and a mission. Let's cast a wide net and get even more perspectives. Perhaps that's what the mayor will propose later this evening. Thanks for all you've done.
Thank you, Tracy. All right, that concludes our business from the audience. Next, Fiona.
Has a few little pictures.
So much color, yeah.
Lots of color. Thank you so much for giving me the ten minutes, ten minutes to speak with you all today. Uh, my name is Fiona Wild and I grew up here in this community and now I'm the executive director of a nonprofit called Wild Wood and Water. Um, my career, even though I am still somewhat young at this point, has spanned, um. A lot of different places all around the world, but it started here in this community, thanks to individuals. Um, and one individual in particular, who was the former mayor of Hood River and his name was Steve Gates. Uh, he, um, supported me and encouraged me to try a new sport and it really. My story is somewhat of a reflection of when one person does something and takes time out of their day to introduce somebody. To something new, you never know what that's gonna open and what doors are gonna open in the future. So Steve took the time when I was fourteen years old to teach me about a sport called stand-up paddling. And it ended up transforming what I did then and now. So, um, growing up here, this has always been home. My mom, Ellen Wild here is also in the audience. Um. I fell in love with water sports and now I have four world titles. One of which being a junior world title in windsurfing and three world titles in stand-up paddling. And all of this happened because of that one person took time to explain something and teach me something. And, um. Steve created this thing called the Jet Team. It was a junior elite team. And we trained twice a week in the summertime and it was a phenomenal way to get on the water with other young people. And learn things not just about sport, but about life and about showing up early and showing up on time and, you know, working hard. Um, so unfortunately, Steve is no longer with us. He passed away a few years ago. But before his passing, he asked me to continue on the team. And I said, absolutely. But the result of continuing on the team and after a little bit of discussion with Big Wince, his business here in town, I said, hey. You know, we'd really like to turn this into a nonprofit and, you know, make sure that more people can become accessible. More people can access the river in our communities. And there is one really big element that's missing in our community and that's water safety education. So we founded Wild Wood and Water and we are now going into our third season, um, starting here. Any, any day now. So Wild Wood and Water is founded on the basis of providing access to everybody in our community. Who wishes to participate in water sports and also creating more education about the possibilities that we have here in our community. Um, there's three different pillars of our organization. We have free community programs, partnership programs and also performance programs. The performance programs, even though we are a nonprofit, we have to bring in funds someplace in addition to, you know, grants and donations. And so we have a section of our, um, organization that's performance-based, that is getting kids into more high-performance. Sports and also with coaching to elevate them to whatever level they would like to be at. There are scholarships for anybody that wants to apply for any of those high-performance camps and training programs that run all summer long. Um, it also follows a model of continuing on the jet team, which is one of our programs. So we have two different stand-up paddle teams, a development and junior elite team, two different wing foil youth camps, a wing foil youth team as well. So there are five total programs under the performance programs. Now, the other element, okay, great, it's good that you have performance programs, but we also need to make sure that anybody that wants to can come and participate. So every week in the summer, uh, starting the first Saturday of July through the last Saturday of August, we do free community stand-up paddling. So from ten AM to noon, yeah, to twelve, um, we're based at the water, at the Hood River event site. Down on the dock where the San Bar Cafe used to be, if anybody knows. It's a free, um, stand-up paddling day. You don't have to have any experience, um, on the boards. You don't have to have any equipment. You don't even have to be a very competent swimmer. We have educated staff that is there, that is trained, not only in lifeguarding, but also in. Um, first aid CPR, emergency response in the water. That's there to help people get introduced to the sport. Um, one of the other things that we've really been working on is limiting costs to, um, enter a sport. We all know that sports are expensive no matter what. So when you come down to the community programs. Even though you have to pay to park at the event site these days, we have multiple parking passes that we can give to families and individuals. So they can actually come and enjoy a free day on the water. The other free program that we do is an introduction to wing foiling, which is a brand new sport that has gained a lot of popularity. Here in not only the community, but the world. And so every Thursday evenings from five thirty to seven thirty, we have a. Free community wing foil orientation, which is an introduction to the sport. And once again, there is no registration necessary for either our Saturday community paddles or Thursday community wings. And people get the opportunity to come down and try the sports. Now, that was a little bit about the free community programs and our partnership and, um, our performance programs. The heart of Wild Wind and Water right now and what will carry us through hopefully in the future are our partnership programs. These are partnerships that we have developed with the Hood River County School District. This year it's also the Dallas School District. And White Salmon School District. And last but not least, with the Hood River County Marine Sheriff, Joel Carmody. Um. We started a program called Viento y Agua. I grew up going to school in Mexico and when I went to school there, nobody spoke English. So I learned to grow up in two different languages. So all of our programs are available in both Spanish and in English. The program Viento y Agua is with Hood River migrant education. And the goal is not only to provide access for the students that are enrolled in the migrant education to water sports, um, over a three-week camp. But also to provide a paid internships for the older high school students that most likely traditionally wouldn't be able to come and participate in. A summer camp due to the fact that they're typically picking in orchards. So we provided a, a working base. So students can come and not only participate as campers, but also be interns, learning a new trade to then be able to be mentors for the younger kids. That are also in the programs. Um, la- the first year, uh, we had six students. Last year, we had twelve high school students. This year, we also again have twelve high school students, four of whom have graduated and are coming back this year as staff. So we have another new four incoming students that are also gonna be filling up that twelve. Um. The last bit is with Joel Carmody. This spring, um, the Marine Deputy Sheriff and I have been going to different classrooms. Presenting water safety information to the students, talking about, A, where they can access the water. Where you can access, you know, free life jackets at the life jacket loaner stations that are around the community. And also the fact that you can get free life jackets from the sheriff himself. Um, he has been given life jackets from the Oregon State Marine Board that are free for the community to get. So between that and talking about some of the dangers that are present here, like the fact that unfortunately, we don't have lifeguards down at the waterfront. Um, and we do have really strong currents and wind and, um, cold water, educating the students. Uh, the idea is to share the knowledge with our community. If people know about some of the dangers there, if people have access to resources. Like life jackets to make themselves safe in and around the waterfront, hopefully our community as a whole can become a bit safer. So the numbers are pretty cool. Um, Joel alone has presented to five, sorry, seven hundred and fifty-four students. Um, from kindergarten, um, up through sixth grade. And then I, in addition, separately have presented to six hundred and fifty-nine students, ranging from, uh, second grade. All the way up through eighth grade. And that number on my side includes students at Whitson Elementary in White Salmon. Um, as well as, uh, Hood River Middle School, Y East Middle School, May Street and West Side. Uh, so this is a really big program that we hope to continue and introduce more to the school districts. You know, academic, well, slightly external but academic, um, interests to, you know, make sure that it's part of the curriculum. Especially in the springtime before, you know, kids go out for summer breaks so they can make smart decisions and, and know more about the Hood River waterfront. Um, and also know that the Hood River waterfront is a public space that anybody can come to. So Wild Wood and Water, it's a small organization just starting. Um, this is only year three, but I'm pleased to tell you. That we have thirty employees, including the twelve interns, um, on our staff this summer. Um, all of whom are excited to get in the water to then meet other elements of the community, other people of the community. And also learning, excited to learn new things too about not just the water, but also some more of the life goals in terms of being part of a big team. So it all kind of goes back to the thing that Steve taught at the beginning, which is like, you might be learning a sport. Or, you know, learning how to teach somebody a sport, but you're learning a lot of other, um, really positive and strong life goals along the way too. So, thank you.
Thanks for coming, Fiona. Thomas for our neighbor.
Thank you. It sounds like you're doing some great work.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. And, and we always ask, I think, anybody that comes here, um, that's doing such great work. Is there anything the city can do to help you with the impediments or anything that's standing in your way that the city may be able to help with?
Um, well, I think the, the two things that come to mind right away would be to encourage more people to participate. In a free activity that is, you know, available to anybody in the community. Um, you know, we really want to encourage that. So people. You know, some, some of the feedback that we heard initially when we started these free programs was that a lot of people didn't know that the waterfront was public access. Um, so really communicating with the community that there, you know, are opportunities to get on the water that, you know, or even learn about the waterfront. That don't, um, you know, that, that, that don't require money to do that. And then another thing that we would really like to do and one of the ways that potentially working together too, um, would be creating more transportation. Um, availability down to the waterfront with, you know, the buses with the cat system as well, just to make sure that more people can access. Um, the waterfront. That and. A bit more signage, to be honest, about, you know, some of the dangers that are in this area regarding the waterfront, um. Just to make sure that, you know, people can understand that, you know, there is current and maybe what is current, you know, in and around the water. So they can make more safe and educated, um, decisions about what are the right things to do and so they can keep themselves and their kids and their families and. Friends safe and around the water. So some feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fiona, if you could follow up with that last point about more signage, if you could like draw something, get, get it to me, like, here's what, if you were the. The doer, what it would look like. I'm gonna follow up on the transportation because I've heard wonderful stories about kids taking the bus to the pool in the summer. I'd like to have them to the water in the summer also.
If we could coordinate it with the timing of the free community programs, that would be ideal. Because then not only are you going to someplace, but you're going to someplace where you actually have something to do, to fill that time, which I think is a really. Good way to be in and around the water. So, thank you.
Oh, okay, we have some action items. Pressure-reducing valve contract award, Randy.
Yeah, for me, uh, Honorable Mayor and Councilman Moose, the purpose of this is to approve the. Uh, replacement of two pressure-reducing valves, or vaults in the city here. Uh, we put this project out to bid the third of May and received bids on the thirtieth. Uh, we received three bids on this project. The low bid came in at four hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Um, which is, was a, was a good bid, um, below the engineer's estimate. These, these, uh, ERVs are located at Rand Road, near Cascade and Twentieth Street, near Cascade. Um, both at.
The bottom of the hill.
Yeah, it's the bottom of the hill. Um, both of them are in very poor condition and are very hard to service at the moment, uh, needing to be upgraded. So. The city, uh, has had HPH consulting engineers and city staff have looked at the qualifications of the bidders and recommend. Awarding the bid to beam excavating at this time. I think Chris had some, some, uh, uh, input on the fiscal impacts.
Yes, I think, uh, one of the reasons we made this an action item, um, we'd like to incorporate this change within the current, uh, fiscal twenty twenty-five budget. Um, so originally this project, uh, and the contingency was in a sort of four hundred and thirty thousand dollars total project cost. Plus related contingency, uh, given the contract award, um, I believe in the note, the total fiscal impact, budget change. Plus contingency addition is about thirty thousand dollars. Um, so when you consider the, the approval of the budget. Um, should this, should this be a number of the city council, we'd like to have that included in the new fiscal twenty twenty-five budget.
Great, thanks. Questions for Randy? Go ahead, Megan.
I might be more a question for Chris. Um, and, and not necessarily even specifically on this, but so, you know, the, the actual bid is below the engineer's estimate. But that's still over what was in the budget. So is the budget based on estimates from a few years ago or? Like what, where's, where does that discrepancy go up?
I'm glad I got to pass over to Randy.
So the budgets are, are, are basically our best guess as this is going. Uh, we, we received the engineer's estimate just before bid. Um, the, the official final estimate. This is a, this is a pretty quick project to develop, so. There wasn't a lot of opportunity for change or whatever, um. But yeah, as far as the budget estimates are basically our best guess.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, I'm gonna move that we authorize the award of the construction contract for the Twentieth Street and Rand Road PRV replacement project. In the amount of four hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars to beam excavating and approve. An additional forty-five thousand eight hundred dollars in contingency funding.
Moved by Saunders.
Second.
Second by Doug. Further discussion? All in favor?
Mayor, I believe you're talking to Rivera. She is this naked and just ready to get rejoined in the meeting. So I think she's waiting to miss this stuff.
Great, so we have, uh, four eyes. We have an unknown Gladys. Chair votes, I, most from passes. Great, thank you. Uh, next, the Q four supplemental budget?
Yes, thank you. So lots of budget stuff on the calendar, uh, today. Um, so, uh, this is the second supplemental budget. Um, for the year, this is for the fiscal twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. So our current fiscal year budget. Uh, and this is the, these are making the final adjustments, um, for this calendar year. Um, so, uh, a couple of these are budget-driven, um, others are sort of reflected in the current fiscal twenty twenty-five budget. So some of these we've talked about before, um, and sort of come out of these changes. The first is, uh, in the general fund. Um, we have moved thirty-five thousand dollars out of Medicare audit expense. Uh, that expense then got carried over to the fiscal twenty-five budget. Um, this audit is ongoing. Uh, the, the work is currently being done, but will not be billed and invoiced, uh, until the thirty, um, the twenty twenty-five budget. Um, parking, we talked about in, in the budget, uh, the, the move to the Cali machines. Um, the use of the apps, uh, has increased the number of small denomination debit and credit card charges. Uh, those have a, uh, fairly high fixed cost associated with them. So the number of small charges has increased credit card expense. Um, there's also been some other charges associated with the parking system subscription software services. Uh, we've made adjustments in the twenty twenty-five budget to account for this. Um, revisiting, uh, the merchant card processors, other providers will be a priority in the fiscal twenty-five, twenty-five budget. Um, but in the meantime, uh, these are over-budgeted amounts, uh, that we're accounting for in, in the, this current supplemental budget. Um, there is an associated transfer of contingency, uh, from the general fund, um, to offset these, I expect these. um to offset these unexpected, these unanticipated expenses. Um, those are the general fund changes. Uh, I guess I go fund by fund. Any questions on the general fund changes?
While it seems annoying that there's a higher than expected credit card fee, it is like the new world where we like charge the Visa for a stick of gum, like, we, to some extent, we could have known that, like, are we having a lot more parkers or like we just whoops didn't realize that paying a parking meter with a credit card is kind of a per, per cap, like, per transaction expensive thing?
Yeah, I mean, this was the, this is, uh, this is the first year that we've gone a hundred percent Cali. Um, so I, you know, I think this was something we just didn't, you know, didn't plan for.
Great, thank you.
Anything else on the general fund?
Very.
Um, road fund, again, just a budget adjustment. Uh, so the second I note signalization on May thirteenth to the twenty twenty, uh, May thirteenth, city council approved a change order for that project. The project is complete. Um, so uh, but there's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar increase in the cost. Uh, that is offset one hundred percent um by funds to be received to the road fund from the Columbia Cascade Urban Renewal District. And so the uh supplemental budget will both increase the signalization project costs and then also increase the revenue received from uh the, the uh Columbia Cascade Urban Renewal. Um, those are the changes of the road fund. Um.
Very on.
In the internal services fund, uh, this is where the, uh, the administration expenses sit. Uh, there are certain administrative, administrative expenses that are anticipated, anticipated to exceed budget. Um, the larger ones include uh the increased IT service expense. We've talked about the fact that uh we increased the Radcomp contract uh with IT to expand the desk services, help desk services. Um, that has also been addressed in the current fiscal twenty twenty-five budget. Um, uh, legal services were out of scope relating to labor agreements. Um, and finally, uh, the new accounting standards implemented during the fiscal year, the previous fiscal year, complicated the audit process, and so third-party expenses for audit work uh were uh higher than budget. Um, there were some administrative costs that remained under budget. However, those savings were insufficient to fully offset these overages. And so there's fifty thousand dollars of administrative expense overages uh that are being offset by a transfer of fifty thousand dollars from the administrative expenditure shares contingency. Um, so those are the admin, uh, those are the internal service fund changes. Again, a hundred percent admin expenses. Any questions here?
Very.
Great. And the last is the, the fiduciary fund. Um, this is the pass-through fund uh for the city of Mosher. Um, water revenue receipts uh are expected to be uh greater than budget. Um, therefore distributions, including the city fee, would be greater than budget. And so again, this is just a direct offset um to, to adjust the, the supplemental budget. Um, so those are the changes. Again, these are the final changes for the current fiscal year, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, and the staff recommendation uh is to make these appropriations and then adjust the, the adopted budget.
Thank you, Chris, for your clear communication. It feels like you're helping me understand instead of trying to, as sometimes this happened in my life, like be snowed under by the details and dollars, so. Feels good that we're watching the folks' money carefully.
Great.
Thomas? I would end the motion.
I move that the city council approved resolution twenty-four dash thirteen to make appropriations and adjust the adopted budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four.
Move by Paulson.
I'll second.
Second by Saunders. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Opposed, Chair of Time motion passes. Thank you. Oh, good.
I get to stay on stage.
But, but this is a public hearing, right?
This is the public.
This is the time scheduled for a public hearing regarding the approved budget for FY twenty-four, twenty-five and the use of state shared revenue for the city of Hood River. The approved budget uses state shared revenue as a general fund revenue source, including police, fire, EMS, parks and planning programs. We will now take public testimony. City recorder, has anyone registered to speak or provided written testimony? Thank you. Public hearing on fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five approved budget and use of state shared revenue is now closed.
Great. Um, so this is the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. Um, obviously, this was a, a product of uh the city of Hood River staff, along with the budget committee comprised of elected and non-elected city resident members. Um, the budget committee approved the budget on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Um, a public hearing that's just happened was required to approve this budget and the use, uh, the city's use of state shared revenue. Um, this is required by Oregon budget law, and so this is that process. Um, the budget continues ongoing operational programs uh and, and provides service levels from prior fiscal years. City personnel budgets provided for recent addition of an HR manager and appropriated changes in salaries as outlined in the executed labor agreements. Public work budgets include funds for continued improvements of critical water, wastewater and storm line replacements, as well as road repair. Um, the budget remains uh prepared on the basis of accounting, same as previous year. And the summary of the, of the budget appropriations appears as res- the resolution twenty twenty-four oh nine. Um, additionally, this resolution uh approves the imposition of the tax levies. And then there's a separate uh resolution which elects to receive state shared revenues. And that is the, oh, and then lastly, I should mention, um, the resolution will be updated uh to adjust for the recent approved change that you just made to the PRV uh replacement project.
Questions for Chris?
Motion.
I'm ready.
I move that the city council adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh nine, adopting the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget as amended for the uh approved uh Twentieth Street and Rand Road PRV replacement project costs and imposing tax levies and um adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash ten, electing to receive state shared revenues.
Well done, move by Saunders.
Second.
Second by the peanut. This is, you know, the whole budget, this is a lot of money, so good job us doing it correctly and carefully. The work, you know, over the May meetings and I'm glad, I'm glad we have the, the ability to, to do this right. Uh, any discussion?
I look forward not to be chair.
Yes, let the record show, no, 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 Paulson.
Just yay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Chair of Time motion passes. The budget passes. Right, good job.
Thank you.
Consent agenda? I know that is uh Councilor Rivera's practice to not to abstain on these, so let's see how that goes is Gladys, shall we pull the number, item number one from the consent agenda?
Yes, please.
Perfect. I would entertain a motion for the amended consent agenda.
I move we approve the amended consent agenda.
By Saunders.
Second.
Second by Paulson. Discussion, which is simply as interfund loan resolution at this point. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Chair of Time motion passes. Now, we have two permit. Now, I gotta comment on this. Are they really called GF and DF respectively? That seems like a weird coincidence. It's the same owners. Good answer. Okay. Thank you. Um, so I would entertain a motion to approve.
I move we approve the OLCC permits for GF LLC and DF LLC.
Moved by Saunders.
Second.
Second by Paulson. Discussion. Gladys, you gonna say your thing?
Uh, yeah, sorry. I will be abstaining from OLCC permit applications. If we and our community partners, including the county, are able to provide adequate transportation, I will start approving OLC applications again.
Thank you, Gladys. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Chair of Time motion passes. Discussion items?
Um, so uh coming back to the current fiscal year, so fiscal year, fiscal twenty twenty.
You, you're making good humor about it, but it totally helps. Okay, this is what we're talking about.
Helps everybody.
Yeah.
Um, so uh, so um in front of you is the Q three financial report. Um, this provides information that's available through the first nine months of the current fiscal year. Uh, so these reports reflect financial data through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Um, so revenue through Q three for the general fund was eight point three million dollars. Uh, that's seventy-seven percent of the annual budgeted revenue of ten point eight million. Uh, we've discussed in the past that the revenue receipts include one-time transfers of the general obligation bond reserve to the general fund. Um, adjusted for non-recurring one-time revenue receipts between this fiscal year and last fiscal year, third quarter revenues were three point one percent greater than for the same period one year earlier. Again, that's adjusting for one-time revenues. Um, uh, this continues the same trend that was seen uh during the previous quarter. Um, year-end estimates of revenues and expenses are based on historical trends. Uh, utilizing these trends, Q three transient lodging tax receipts continue to be lower than budget, about eight point three percent. Although I would like to note that that is a, uh, there was improvement during this, this quarter. Uh, I think we were, that was twelve percent below budget uh the last, uh, last quarter. So we've seen some improvement there. I'll make an additional note about that when we talk about parking. Um, additional revenues trending below budget include the local marijuana taxes, uh, almost thirty percent below budget. Um, and then parking meter receipts, uh, six point three percent below budget. Um, it is interesting to note parking receipts improved as well. Uh, so TLT and parking revenues, both tourism-related incomes, both saw improvements over the quarter. Uh, our projections and forecasts are seasonally adjusted. Um, so there is evidence that there is actual sort of improvement um as it relates to, to tourist activity. So, um, it would be interesting to see that, if that, we get further improvements at the end of the quarter uh or the end of the year, uh, but it's good to see that that revenue is bouncing back somewhat. Um, uh, the other, the other revenue sources that were impacted, um, really all relate to uh, to building and uh, and building pace, right? So planning revenues, building revenues, engineering revenues, all a little bit lower than, uh, than projected, again, because of the, the lower uh pace of development. Um, on the expense side, uh, you know, all the departments did a really, really good job managing their budgets. Um, we've talked about the, the parking overage, uh, so the, uh, the parking additional expense that we're projecting for this fiscal year and that we just addressed in the budget, uh, in the, the budget resolution um is here as well as the, the use of uh contingency. Um, that said, uh, we are still overall projecting uh a slight surplus um in revenues over, uh, over expenses um in the general fund, right, which is great. So we projected a balanced budget and uh, and we'd expect to, to, to be, to be balanced, if not a little bit to the good. Um, so right now we're projecting a change in the fund balance, the addition of about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Um, again, sort of give or take, uh, but, but uh, that's, that is the current production. Um, the only other note here on other major, major revenue sources, uh, so water, sewer, storm, um, all within about one and a half percent of, of budget. So, uh, there is nothing to do here other than receive the report accepted. Um, but obviously, I'll take any questions that you may have uh with regards to the current fiscal year.
Thank you, Chris.
Well, does this put a bow on twenty-three, twenty-four, or do we expect a final cleanup?
As far as, as I, 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 so, uh, when we close the year, right, and in, you know, in the next fiscal year, I will present s- a similar Q four, right, sort of closeout. That's the way I would.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Animal control? Oh, I've summoned the chief. Thanks for being here, chief.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, Chief Holstein and I are bringing you this topic really at the concept level because we're not really sure how to proceed. Uh, the city has had a longstanding uh intergovernmental agreement with the county for animal control. Um, we had a very short conversation about it during the budget. Um, the county seeks to uh end the current IGA and start a new one. Um, but before we really dive deeply into that, we wanted to just check in with you. One, do you want to enter into an IGA with the county? And if so, um, what information would you like to, um, for us to research and, and any terms that you uh want us to identify in our conversations with the county? So starting at the very beginning tonight.
Thank you.
Anybody like to lead?
Lead off?
Very good.
Thank you. Um, I have a bunch of things, so you guys can cut me off. But I guess, you know, so this is why we've never talked about this IGA at least in the time I've been on here. Um, so I feel like I have some very base questions of like, what, what are the exact services we're getting? Um, you know, so, so is it a certain number of hours? Um, is it a certain number of incidences? Is it a certain number of dogs? Um, and like, and then I think the other end of that is, yeah, it's like, what, how, what is the, how are they allocating costs and assigning us a dollar amount? Um, again, is it, you know, a certain amount per call? Is it a certain amount per dog? Is it, oh, the shelter charges an X amount per dog? Or per night or, um, and I guess, you know, specifically in the, there, there is a current IGA. From my understanding, it was already increasing by inflation, so this extra ask is something new beyond inflation. So I'd love to know, are they proposing to increase services for that or what are we getting for that extra money? Um, uh, you know, I guess some of this in there, I'd love some data. I know there's a, a little bit provided, some of which I don't totally understand still, um. Uh, you know, like, okay, I'm a little bit into that of, you know, yeah, it's calls for service. Are those separate from these things below or do the things below come out of the calls for service? Um, you know, what's marina patrols in particular?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'd love to see some comparison of what, what the calls are in the city versus in the county. Um, I think, you know, um, chief, the chief mentioned this before, of what are the number of calls that are dealt with by animal control during the hours we do get served versus what city officers are, are doing outside of those hours. Um, I, is there additional paperwork or service that our officers can't or won't do that we're getting from the county? That might be all of them.
Great. Thank you.
I just love words, though.
Yeah, and I think, um, Chief Holstein might have some of that data, but I thought tonight, um, just for the matter of time, we really just take all of this and then uh, we can do our homework and come back to you if that works. Otherwise, I'd be happy to call on him if he wants to share data now.
So, my opinion is that the, how, how staff sees value, both fiscally and, and operationally is the most important thing. And um, if, if that's continuing to deal with the county, let's work out the details. If it's having, you know, and Abigail mentioned it, it are, are one-on-one, then if it's having an agreement with the animal shelter and, and we, we basically DIY animal control. Um, if, if that's the recommendation from uh chief's staff and, and, and Abigail, then I, I would support that. So, I don't, especially since the IGA is up, I don't think we should just move to the, move to that same thing right away. We should say, well, what is the, what is the value for the, for the city? What's the best way to do it? And then write whatever IGA is needed to implement that. I, I, I don't think that history says we're just gonna do this again. Um, if that's the best answer, we do it. If not, let's do something different.
Thank you, counselor. We will note that the lease that adopted dog has with the county does not allow him to subcontract with other agencies.
So, yeah, I wish to comment on that. I think it feels a little unfair, um, to have a monopoly on the, you know, one uh animal control resource that we do have. Um, and in full transparency, you know, I think if the county knows that, they should be fully demonstrating what these costs are for, and I applaud Councilor Saunders for those list of questions. I agree with all of them, and I think that's why we have to scrutinize it heavily.
Great.
Gladys?
Yeah, I would, I would second um what both Megan and Doug have stated, especially if it's our officers that are responding to those outside of our calls. Um, you know, how much of that is being offsetted into what they're trying to charge us? And I strongly agree with the not allowing a contract with any other group. Um, would one of those options be that Hood River adopted dog moves within the city limits? I don't know, just a, a potential question of, I don't like feeling like we're being restricted.
I don't feel like anyone's mentioned it, so I'll call it up. There is like a capital cost, like there's a van that says animal services on it, like in the net, you know? But, um, that, that's, it, it, it makes sense to not have competing services. This is like a utility. But figuring out what's the utility, what's the usefulness to us? It also makes me think of Norcore, like we used to all have jails. Now we don't. And it means more driving.
Sorry, that did just remind me of another one of why is this not like Norcore where city residents are already paying the county their tax to the county? Which of course funds Norcore. Um, city residents are already paying the sheriff's office their tax in addition to city police. Uh, you know, what, what, how is this different than folks in the county get treated? Do they already get this service? Are we somehow getting something different or special or more that requires additional payment beyond what our city funds? Should already be paying for? If you can articulate that better, please.
Yeah.
Every city residents, the counties.
Thanks.
Chris. I speculate on how o- others would feel if she was on the other foot, if animal control was housed at the city. And we said, oh, county, um, if you would like to use our facility for your animal control. We will card you this amount and you can only use animal control that's housed here, nowhere else. And that's how it's going to be, because this is how we have chosen to do it, because we're the only ones that, as Doug has mentioned, have this monopoly. Um, I don't, I'm not, I'm not wild about that arrangement or that way of doing business. Um, so that as far as a negotiation tactic, I, I, I don't think flies. I don't think it's ideal in the spirit of, uh, cooperation and working together that we're trying to foster around here. So with that in mind, I would rather, much rather have a more collegiate and cooperative arrangement. Then this sort of, uh. This is going to sound wrong, but hostage taking, uh, with regard to thi- this service. So.
Thank you, Gladys.
Gladys. I don't think, at least for me, that it's this unwillingness to collaborate. But it sounds like overall, we need a little bit more data to be able to make a decision, because we don't understand. Again, how much of our officers additional time, you know, Counselor Saunders brought up the, the paperwork. There, there's a lot that's still really unclear in order for us to make a decision.
Thank you, Gladys. I think I'm a little fuzzy operationally, so nine to five or whatever, the county employee. Rescues the dog and what happens at ten at night, Chief? Your officer comes, then they, then they have a dog.
So animal control, forty hour week, uh, position.
Right.
So anything outside the forty hours, uh, we handle that during the week.
And so now the dog's in the vehicle.
So, uh, common practice, uh, five oh one, animal controls off. Paul comes home and there's Fluffy on the front steps, calls us, we come pick it up. And we drive it out to the animal shelter, who carry animal shelter now, it's adopted dog. Uh, we lodge it, we have a code in the back, we go in, lodge it, we write out where we found it, type of fluffy white, male female. And then we leave.
And that's not considered them doing business with us directly. Like that's not, that, that's, that's how it works now.
That's how it works now. And that's what it's, it, that's the way it's always worked.
Yeah.
Um, this contract has kind of always been there.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if you remember interim city manager, Don Otterman. Uh, he was one of that series we had, like back to back. Um, he came up with the new contract and revised that to what we have today. Uh, the contract didn't live in my budget. It lived in the, I bet it would be more of the administrative budget. Uh, when Will was finance being, uh, someone to oversee it, enforcement, we put it into my budget at that time.
Great. I understand better. Thank you, Chief.
Much clearer my comments. Adopted dog can't work with anyone else just because they're housed in the county building. It's not determined in the county police. But say Moser or Clack or Cascade Lock, if anyone wants to work with it. Adopted dog, even though they are an independent agency, cannot work with anyone else. The county has final say over anyone adopted dog is going to work with. That is what I am referring to with, with the, uh, the, uh, the hostage.
Just saying that part. Thank you. Thanks. Thank you. Gladys.
Chief, but can you help us understand, for example, let's say it is a Monday through Friday within those forty hours. And the, uh, animal control calls upon a city officer. Can you help us understand what, what that process looks like? And I don't know if you have data on how often that happens, that it is within work hours, but within city limits. And a city officer is being called.
I mean, there is times where, uh, animal control's on duty and due to the customer, the community member. Um, we will be called to assist regards to, uh, kind of an uncomfortable situation. Um, and we're more than willing to do that, uh, just because when you ask, we're gonna be there. Uh, we're, we're there to protect her as much as anyone else, so. So that does happen.
Yeah.
Is it frequently, um, a handful, I can, a handful of times on my, you know, I can count. Uh, and we kind of know those residents, uh, we deal with them outside the animal control. So we, we kind of have a rapport already with them. So it helps for us to, at, at the level of respect as police officer via animal control. Unfortunately, unfortunately, people handled that differently.
Yeah, and I wanna, I wanna repeat, I'm not stating we shouldn't collaborate. I'm just trying to better understand if city officers are being called, what is the cost of that as well? How many times does that happen? And is there an opportunity that we could negotiate? A potential, maybe not such a large increase, because again, it's city officers that are responding to some of these calls. Within the forty hours or even outside of those forty hours.
I mean, really, what, uh, you know, what do we have? A hundred and sixty hour work week, of work month, excuse me. So you gotta think the city of Hood River is taking a hundred and twenty hours of that, basically. If she's forty hours work week, so, or per month. Well, I guess you'd have to break it down twenty-four hours, period and such. I mean, I have statistics and stats determining. Does the city P D take the majority of the animal control calls? Absolutely, which makes sense. You're here for an eight-hour day, we're, we're gonna take the rest. Does a lot of this occur after five o'clock? I was telling Abigail, that's when people come home from work and see Fluffy walking down the street. A little concerned about it getting ran over, uh, and they call us, you know, after, after business hours, hours of control, so.
We'll just remind ourselves that we're talking about six thousand dollars.
Yeah, we're looking at a twenty percent raise. Um, a- a- and county overall, you know, they're looking for some revenue. Uh, Cascade Lock's contract with Sheriff's Office, it was like a hundred and twenty-four thousand, it's up to a hundred and fifty-four thousand this year. So, you know, we're seeing raises all over. It's not just animal control.
They got a budget too.
Absolutely.
Anything else for the staff to take away and digest? Gladys.
So Chief, am I assuming correctly that you are? Recommending or suggesting that we just pay the additional six grand and go into a new agreement with the animal control? What is your recommendation?
Uh, my recommendation, I have, I have several recommendations, what I think we should be doing. Um, yeah. If you want to know, I personally believe it's what are we getting out of it? Uh, my officers at times go, where's animal control? When we thought they'd be on duty from eight to five, um. Do I believe, again, I believe it's kind of monopoly where they've over, they've got animal control as far as sheltering. That's our biggest hangup right now, is sheltering an animal. It's not the enforcement part of it. I have no problem with our guys doing it, because we're doing it. Uh, my concern is we don't want to lose the ability to shelter a dog that's very convenient for us. You know, and state statute says that the county governing body will have an adequate shelter for animals. It will be paid out of their general fund. If, or paid out of licensing or reimbursement based on sheltering and stuff like that, so. I mean, there's O R S, you know, it's the six, I actually was kind of doing it down a dirty, O R S six zero nine. Um, talks about that stuff, you know, what will and will and won't happen. So that's my biggest fear is I don't want to lose the ability to house dogs. My ultimate dream, it's kind of what Doug had stated, is I would love to do, uh, adopted dogs, they're in the red.
Yeah.
We help them. My ultimate goal was to, and I told Abigail, is find out what it costs per day to house a dog. We would send a dog up there and we could invoice through, adopt a dog, if they could disperse that money as they said, felt fit for their budget purposes. Um, I mean, that would be my ultimate desire.
Thanks, Chief. Anything else for staff at this time? Take it away, y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. You were totally, thank you for the questions. We'll, uh, we'll find data. Come back to you with another presentation on, uh, to answer your questions, um, and then, um, depending how that goes, you know, maybe we could. Uh, I'm sure the sheriff's office would be willing to come and present to you if that would be of interest to you. So we'll come back with another discussion, uh, item, where we can talk about it more in depth before we bring you an actual I G A for consideration, if that works.
Thank you.
All right.
Anything on city recurring or city manager comments?
Yeah, I have two items for you. Um, the first, now let's go to Counselor Polton for any help on this.
You.
Thank you, um, is, uh, the Bridge Authority is requesting, uh, the mayor to sign on to a letter. That's, I think will be, um, come from a number of agencies in Oregon that will be directed to, um, the Joint Transportation Committee of the Oregon State Legislature, um, requesting and encouraging, I think, a hundred and five million dollar commitment from Oregon in twenty twenty-five. So, um, I guess if you have anything to add to that, otherwise just looking for a thumbs up for, uh, the mayor to put his signature on this letter. That will be coming from, uh, cities and counties and other agencies in that area.
Pretty all right with that?
Yes.
Think so.
I didn't see a one, one George meeting recently, but I would assume so. Great. And then my second was, uh, I mentioned last time, um, we're looking to fill the Energy Council seat that was held by Counselor, um, Kuhnahan. Um, I brought you a little bit more information today, uh, that group meets, um, quarterly, so they only have two more meetings left this year. They're Thursdays, um, September fifth and December fifth, um, from three to five P M. Um, then they also have a number of subcommittees, um, let's see, they have, um. Let's see, buildings, transportation and land use, community scale solutions, those subcommittees meet, meet monthly. And they schedule those around whoever is like, whoever is a member and when they're available. So tho- those are, those can be adjusted. Um, and their meetings are hybrid, they're both in-person and remote. Um, and so they say the commitment's probably about two to four hours a month. So, you know, if anyone wants to.
Is any among us interested in doing this, willing to do this?
Um, I would love to learn about the monthly meetings. I feel like I could absolutely commit to like a September and December, three to five. But I'd love to understand the building, transportation and the other before giving a full yes. Or at least that I'd be willing to participate.
Okay.
If that sounds.
Thank you, Gladys.
Uh, Counselor Rivera, I will connect you, you and, uh, Lindsay McClure, the staffer for Energy Council. Maybe the three of us and maybe Ha- Haley Elliott as our staffer. Um, maybe the four of us can just get on a Zoom call and talk a little bit more about what it involves.
Yes, sounds like fun.
I'll follow up with you. Great, those were my items.
Thank you. Gladys, committee reports.
Um, I do, I just want to thank everybody that was, uh, at the Gloria Center unveiling or opening, grand opening. That took place, the Gloria Center features, uh, thirty-six non-congregate shelter beds and provides services for community. Including housing, utility assistance, vet services, employment, behavioral health, physical health. And a variety of other services. It also serves as an emergency shelter for extreme heat, cold or poor air quality. I just want to give a big shout out to Kenny and all the partners that were there. And thanks to our mayor and Abigail, who were also there as well to support.
Congratulations, Gladys. What a successful seeming day. The line that Kenny, the, the line that Kenny used that I've already texted around the horn for me is. At first the opponents said it was gonna ruin the neighborhood and then they said it was too nice.
Yeah, I mean.
Very satisfying to me.
I, I, I agree, I agree.
Anything else?
Would love to have one in Hood River.
Yeah. All right, Doug.
Uh, yeah, uh, so Kevin Liberty and I today met earlier this morning with sort of the seven eighty Ran Road stakeholders. Uh, if you recall, that's, uh, they requested some involvement from the city regarding, you know, naming and branding and those sorts of things. So, um, that, tha- that was one of the topics today, sort of a kickoff, you know, um, this, this meeting included, you know, uh, Enchewana, uh, Next Door. C C H C, Mid Columbia Housing Authority, Maccak, Agange Northwest, O H D C, C D P led the meeting. Um, but yeah, they, they, they gave a lot of updates to design, uh, both, you know, landscaping and the physical buildings, et cetera. So really cool to see a lot of this stuff coming together. Um, one of the things that Kevin noted that I thought was really cool, and I agreed with, with seeing a lot of the designs were, you know, this is somewhere people want to live. Right? And I know that was a goal of the council that approved that, um, and, you know, from what I could tell, you know, I made a comment, it reminded me a lot of the. Housing developments I saw in the Netherlands that were very, you know, inclusive and everything. It's just really exciting seeing it come together. Um, one thing that did come up again, um, was the, uh, you know, the wine country road name. So, um, I think, uh, yeah, Mark's, uh, got the same sentiment, I think, as the rest of us. So I think we should consider, you know, maybe after the naming of, uh, of that, to maybe to, to coincide with that. Um, but also, you know, where that is going at this point is, you know, over the course of the next two to four weeks. You know, stakeholders from the community groups that I just mentioned, uh, would be meeting, you know, two or three times to, to review, to, to get a name out there. And, uh, you know, feedback from most people were, you know, get, get feedback from, you know, Enchewana, Next Door, et cetera. You know, all the things you would, you expect. So, uh, I think that's headed in the right direction. And, um, if you have any thoughts, please let me know on naming or groups there, et cetera, uh, that I could, you know, talk to them about. But I think it's headed in a great direction and so is the project and, you know, bravo.
Thanks so much for engaging with that. Wow, what, so many, like, as it comes more into focus, like, so many issues and topics and.
Yeah, and I, I couldn't, couldn't help it, you know, again, the, the council that was, that came to be, the counselors that came before me to get that there. It's, uh, something you should be super proud of, uh, I'm very awesome.
Anything else, Doug?
That's it for me this week.
Um, just really brief, you know, Gladys and I are on the, the very ad hoc, um, council appointment committee. Um, Jen got the application out, uh, two weeks ago. Um, and I think, uh, Abigail just sent, um, some draft language to you all to start telling your networks, uh, make sure people are actually applying for that. It closes at the end of the month. I'm looking at Abigail, July first. Thank you. And, um, but yeah, please, please spread the word. Um, hopefully we can get some ma- many interested people. Um, but definitely rely on the community to spread the word amongst themselves.
Thanks, Megan. My committee, um, the, I'm a chair Columbia Cascade Housing Corporation, so not the housing authority, but a nonprofit. That's in charge of the development work and is a partner on, uh, the Ran Road project. Joel Manson has resigned as executive director. So that's a big event for us. He's been there the whole time I've been there. And so as you can imagine, we are busy sorting out the transition and moving forward. And keeping the important work alive and, and thriving in the absence of, uh, the departure of, of a longtime leader. Mark?
Uh, V H R's quarterly meeting is this week, so next meeting I'll have more.
So that makes me want to comment. I thought the pride parade was so darn fun. Good job, V H R. Okay, uh, mayor comments, Equity Advisory Council, we heard some input tonight. I've been getting some advice from staff and legal. Um, it does seem like I can kind of either go more formal or less formal. I think there's some advantages to going more formal and there's some more work, which, you know, is never fun. But I think there's so much benefit, so I'll be working, uh, with, with staff to make sure that it seems like it's being run in the right way. Uh, council comments, Grant?
Um, nothing for now, thanks.
Mark?
Nothing for right now.
Megan?
I, I tabled with the city, uh, for First Friday and I fully agree, it was super fun and a really well-done event. Um, I did want to publicly thank, um, public work staff for their work as always with First Friday. And then also Jackie and Abigail for being at the table and getting a good event for the community to participate in.
Yeah. Doug?
Nothing.
Gladys?
Um, yeah, I too had fun at Pride. Um, thank you, Jackie, uh, Public Work Staff, Abigail, Grant, Megan, I closed my rings that day. Uh, I also just, I I realized that I forgot to add that Councillor Polson and Sweet Little Piper were also at the Gloria Center opening, so I just wanted to give credit as well. And then a comment around the mayor's equity, um, council. I was chatting with Abigail around as as we think about opportunities to connect with community members or just specific agencies that are serving some of our community members, and how important it would be to have their input on helping supporting Jackie with more of a communications framework template, like who are the partners that we get a hold of for this specific purpose or for that specific person, uh, purpose. So I think it would be really beneficial to have their input in a more formalized setting so that we can get better around, you know, how do we outreach a variety of different groups and peoples themselves? Earlier, there was conversation around advertising, right? Like, what does that look like for the city's social media as well? Maybe they could help give some input so that Jackie has just a little more support. Uh, that's it for me.
Thank you, Gladys. Anything else for the good of the order? Abigail?
Uh, if you want to address it, you got a request during public comments from the Latino Festival, uh, for a fee waiver for Jackson Park.
Right.
I'm sorry, that came such last minute, I did not get a chance to write you a memo and, um, have an action, but you did get that request earlier today.
Megan?
Um, and just remind me, that's the same thing we've done for like families in the park and, um, Juneteenth. Okay, then yeah, I'm supportive.
I move we waive the fees for Latinas in the park.
Latino Festival in Jackson Park on August seventeenth.
Moved by Paulson.
Second.
Second by Gladys. Uh, thanks for bringing it up, Abigail. Uh, any discussion on this?
I do. I just want to make a comment. I just want to thank Martha and the Latino Network. This is the fifth year that they have this event that they put on. Uh, Hood River is such a great little town, and I'm really grateful for partners that highlight the multiple cultures that we have here in the gorge. So thank you, Martha. Thank you, Hood River Latino Network.
Well said, Gladys. And I guess from our side, I'm proud of us for prioritizing an inclusive community as one of our goals. It makes it easy to make an operational decision like this. Like if it was another uh, kind of a group that was not in sort of sync with our goals, then it would be harder. But it's like they're, they're out there doing it, we're in here doing it, it makes it's a good fit.
Agreed. And if Martha's still in the room, I'm not sure if she's there now, if there's opportunities for us to help or be present or for Mr. Mayor to speak, please let us know.
I agree, Martha. In case you're on, for example, I'm speaking at an assigned time at Juneteenth and, you know, we, we want to be there with full throat.
Yeah, I was just going to say, these are opportunities to have a city table if staff is so willing, and I I'd be happy to volunteer as needed to show that we care.
Honestly, it reminds me of what Fiona said. She basically said, for some folks, they don't realize the waterfront is public access, like, wow. So just helping us all understand, like, even the free stuff. Pretty touching about me, for me. Gladys?
Okay, promise, last comment. And and that's why it's also, you know, really important that maybe we as the city help advertise more of these, you know, inclusive events that are taking place and reminders that are not just necessarily like, hey, we have new lights on Second and Oak and you know, but that we too are advertising opportunities for a community to get together.
I don't know if everyone had a chance to look through the extremely colorful handout that Fiona provided, but the introduction was sweet. Imagine a nine year old kid like getting on the water, standing on the water, wearing life jacket, floating, like, I was, I was touched. Anything else for the good of the order? Oh, excuse me, we have a motion on the table?
Yeah, we can vote first.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed. Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mark.
Uh, question regarding glad, what, Councillor Rivera has a question. Regarding if we choose to advertise for these events, this is a question probably more for Dan. Regarding advertising for events, thus condoning, and you get where I'm going with this.
Thank you, Councillor Polson. I, uh, I'll let Dan add, but I would say my general policy is we, um, repost from other government agencies, like that's a pretty easy one. We generally don't do, um, nonprofits or certainly not businesses, um, unless the city is a partner. And the fact that you have now waived the fees for this, I consider that a donation or a partnership on behalf of the city, so I'm comfortable, um, with those kind of events being, um, usually we repost rather than create our own post for those.
Like Juneteenth, for example, we've been mentioning that and.
Yep, and you have waived the fees, so the city is a partner, um, to that, to that event.
So hold on just a sec, Dan. Anything to add, Grant, for Dan?
That that was the only.
Thanks for.
Potential legal issue that I want to make sure that we were bringing our basis.
Go ahead, Dan.
Um, well, you've made the policy decision to, um, waive the fees and therefore support this activity. And so, uh, there's, there's no harm in also publicizing that it's going to happen. If that's what you were asking.
Great, thanks. I guess now, sorry. It all strings together. Like, we asked, what can we do to help Fiona? And we haven't given, we are not a partner of Fiona's yet, right? Wind, wind, wild wind and water, we've now learned about, and I'm like all giddy about it, but this, this would, they're not in that category yet, and so.
Right, I I've had, uh, full disclosure, I know the wilds, uh, so we've had a little bit of conversation with them. Uh, and I think one way that the city can support them, um, based on your conversation tonight, is, uh, they apply for a lot of grants. And so if there was a, you know, if they could have a letter of support that comes under the mayor's signature, I think that would be an appropriate, based on the conversation you had tonight with them. Um, but they are not looking for a financial
Right.
um, subsidy or anything from the city.
But it's almost like a funny thing where because we haven't yet given them something, we cannot collaborate to some extent. That, that, that limits us, which is appropriate. We don't want to be just out there willy nilly, but I just observed this. Go ahead, Grant.
If they asked for a dollar.
No, it's a good point. That would, yeah.
I will talk to our finance director and our city attorney about the best rating of that.
And if the mad, if the mayor just happened to paddle by the session, that's what I'm thinking. Anything else? We are adjourned.